All right, I call this Wednesday, August 20th Board of Commissioners meeting to order if we all rise for invocation and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Hanson, please.
Our precious heavenly Father, we thank you that you can come here and do the business of the county. Father, we pray that you would grant us wisdom and guidance in all the decisions that we have to make and just be with each one of us that we might honor you in all that we do. And Father, we just thank you for the opportunity and freedom that we do have to take and serve you and also be an official for the county and stuff, too. We ask it and I name him in.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Bosworth, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Art. Commissioner Peak.
Here.
Commissioner Haskell.
Here.
Commissioner Pearl Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Commissioner Mudry.
Yep.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Drosha.
Here.
Commissioner Toomey.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Christensen.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Commissioner Barber.
Chairman Mott.
Here. All right, we've got a couple of agenda changes. So there is no retirement recognition, and we are going to add labor relations under C, that'd be number seven. So I would move those changes. Support and moved and supported, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes, the July 26 regular meeting minutes and the July 25 special meeting and close meeting minutes.
Move the minutes as written.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Drosha, supported by Commissioner Hanson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have communications. We have one from Houghton County, a resolution urging action to oppose the proposed cuts to Medicaid by the federal government. We also have one from I A E M announces National Emergency Management Awareness Month, and also one from Delta Township, notice of intent to update the master plan. And those are in our packets. Next up, we have limited public comment. If you would like to address the board, please, excuse me, approach the podium and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Chin, and I have been a resident of Eaton County for, since 1986. So I've been here a long time. I'm here to voice my opposition to the resolution regarding the fire training facility. The funding for this facility was requested by myself representing the Charlotte Fire Department and the Rural Fire Association on behalf of the city of Charlotte. Due to an error by the state of Michigan Treasury Department, the check was issued to Eaton County instead of the Eaton County Fire Association, city of Charlotte. When I asked about the error, the Eaton County Communications Director indicated that the state was unwilling to reissue the check. I contacted the county because I had been informed that the county was planning on charging the recipients of the grant 15% as an administrative fee. On one hand, I'm pleased to see that the amount has been reduced to 3% or $21,000 instead of 15%. But on the other hand, losing $21,000 due to an error and taking the fire money away from this project is not acceptable. This facility is for the benefit of training firefighters throughout the county to keep our county safe and to meet the new requirements for the live fire training for our firefighters and volunteer firefighters throughout the county. I wish you would reconsider the fee and allow this money to be used as needed. And this was needed because of the mere fact that the only other fire training facility was located for, at the airport, Lansing Community College and almost impossible to get to. The second item I'd like to discuss is the elimination or reduction of money for community mental health. In 2007, I lost a daughter. Due to mental health issues. I ended up ending, raising my granddaughter. Trying to obtain help in 2007 was nearly impossible as the state budget problems had forced a reduction in funding that resulted in the closing of a number of facilities and reductions in available services for mental health assistance. Believe me, I was well informed and were aware as I was responsible at that time as the director of the state of Michigan's real estate, and I had to close these facilities. There's a need for funding and a shortage of mental health assistance, not only in Eaton County, but throughout the state. Just look at the statistics on the number of suicides of our young people, our veterans in the county. This should be the last place. We should be cutting funding, especially funding that for every dollar we provide brings additional funds of eight to nine dollars from outside funding sources. There's no other program that can bring in matching funds in the same proportion. I urge you to reconsider the reduction or elimination of funds. Fully fund the community and mental health department only when you experience the loss of a child due to suicide will you understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, there'll be another opportunity later on in the meeting. All right, that brings us to our committee reports and resolutions. First up, Public Works and Human Services Committee with Commissioner Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On August 6, Public Works and Health and Human Services Committee met. We received reports from the Road Commission, Construction Codes, and Parks. I have no action items tonight. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next up, we have Public Safety with Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you, Chairman. We had our meeting, monthly meeting, and had reports from the departments. We have one item here, an action item, from the Emergency Management Performance Grant. You know, I would ask maybe, yeah, if Ryan would come up and just briefly go over what it is, this annual occurring thing.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is our annual initial work agreement for the next fiscal year, basically the Emergency Management Performance Grant. The percentage of the salary and benefits that we see, or the cost of the salary and benefits for me, varies each year, but this is just the initial work agreement. This says, these are all the things that we're going to do over the course of the next year in order to receive those grant funds at the end of the next fiscal year. So all those activities you see there on the 14 pages, things that we're going to do over the course of the next year. We never have any issues completing all these. We typically go far above and beyond the minimal requirements of this Emergency Management Performance Grant. But this is just that initial work agreement that you'll sign off on. Commissioner Mott, I'll sign off on, too, as the program coordinator, to be able to start executing those activities so we can receive those funds in a year from now.
Any questions? Did you?
So I'd make a motion that we approve him to receive this grant.
Moved by Commissioner Holmes, supported by Commissioner Peak. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Ryan.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next up, we have Ways and Means report with Commissioner Drosha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a lengthy meeting, but we have many things accomplished. We have several action items tonight. The first of which is a resolution to amend county clerk fee schedule, and I would move this resolution.
Moved by Commissioner Drosha, supported by Commissioner Barber. Questions, comments? Commissioner Toomey.
Yeah. Clerk Bosworth, since you're here tonight, would you like to speak to this at all? I'd just like to hear your opinion on it and kind of where we stand in relation with our neighboring counties and everything as well.
Yes, I did speak at Ways and Means about that. I did a comparison statewide, and surrounding counties and nearby counties are doing the $20 per certified copy. Ingham County charges 30 and has for a long time. So I did a good comparison of the surrounding counties, and it has not been changed since 2017.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next, item number two is resolution authorizing application for county clerk e-recording grant, and I would move this resolution.
Moved by Commissioner Drosha, supported by Commissioner Haskell. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Item number three, and I'll try to beat Mr. Haskell to the punch here. Resolution to approve PA 116 Farmland Open Space Development Rights Agreement, and I would move this resolution also.
Moved by Commissioner Drosha, supported by Commissioner Pearl Wright, or nope, next one next door, okay. Commissioner Whitaker. All right, any questions or comments? No, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number four is resolution to authorize application fire training center grant, and I would move this resolution.
Support.
And then I would like to ask Ben to speak to this, if you would, please. Thank you.
All right, it's moved by Commissioner Drosha, supported by Commissioner Christensen. Comments?
Yeah, so, you know, you heard a little bit of this, and Ways and Means, we went through it pretty thoroughly. But, so we do have a grants administrative policy that was adopted for contracts, grants, and gifts, that is a minimum of 15% consideration. The thing with grants is it's like an iceberg. You see the top surface, but there's 90% of the mass below the surface. There's a lot of reporting, legal opinions, and staff time that go into managing those. Grant reporting runs the duration of the grant itself, and we had a lot of considerations we had to take on when it was brought to our attention that this grant was written by statute, because when an appropriation goes through the legislature, that is law. And so in order to have it rerouted, they would have had to have passed a supplemental, and there's just not the political will at the Capitol, I think, to get a budget right now, let alone single line item rerouting of an appropriation, even though we tried. I will say, we are asking administration is to not do 15% and do 3%. That's in line with what other communities that have done pass-through grants for. I believe the ISD is an example, had the same level of coverage when they passed a program service on. We're not the only community that this happened to. City of Durand is another example of a community that got an appropriation to them that was meant for another agency. We have already provided legal expertise, and we do have legal expenses invested into this. What this resolution does is allows us to have a sub-recipient agreement with the fire departments so that they, the fire training committee can still move forward with their project. We've had great interactions and discussions on this. I think what you're looking at is a mutually agreed path forward for executing this work. And even though it was nobody's intent to be here, we're here, and I think we're doing the most that we can to, and if you wanted to come to the podium, no. So the important thing to know is, in order to override the policy, it's a two-third vote, so we'll have to do a roll call on this, and that's pretty much it.
Yep. Yeah, we talked about this, Ways and Means, and this is the best, this is the best avenue going forward. But anybody else have questions? Commissioner Haskell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the 3% at $21,000, do we think that's a good, like, level for this, the amount of work that's going to go into this going forward, or is there any wiggle room there at all, do you think?
I think that that's going to be a fair assessment of the accounting and the duration of reporting that we're going to have to do through the state and our legal expenses.
Okay.
So that's why we landed on that. To be honest, it may end up being a little more. A lot of that's going to depend on how quickly it's done, the whole project, because we are under the reporting requirements until the grant money's fully expended.
Sure.
So that's hard to say, but I think $21,000, if it ends up costing more, that was the level at right now we're comfortable because we weren't part of that front end of the discussion. Otherwise, we probably would have told the legislators to put a little extra on there because nothing is free, you know? It costs money to do the work of government.
I just wanted to be respectful to the, obviously, the current concerns we are tonight and make sure that the public knows that we are trying to get the dollars to where they were meant to be, as many as we can.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think this is the balancing act, to try to make sure that we're compensated for the work we're doing, but also be good partners to, you know, municipalities, you know, in the county. And I think this is a good, you know, good way to go about it. Commissioner Pearl Wright?
Could you repeat back to me about how long we're looking at, maybe, I mean, not the shortest time that we would be managing this situation, this grant, but maybe the outside, you know, the time limit that we're talking about?
Yeah, I think at a minimum, and I want to say 2027 off the top of my head, the funds have to be expended by then, and I'm getting a nod from the back. So no matter what, the life of this is, you have to spend it or lose it in that period of time. I think based on procurement work that the fire training committee's already done, and everything like that, hopefully a year and a half, if not sooner. I know they're itching to get shovels in the ground, but the holdup really has been navigating this process. So what this resolution does is helps us enter an MOU to tie up loose ends of liability, ownership, and just making sure that all the reporting needs are going to be passed through so that the county can meet our obligation. But as soon as the two years or year and a half is up, once we've expended it, in conversations with the state, that will end our obligation period. So we'll probably have one report following the last spent funds.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Christensen.
So what is the bare minimum? I know it started at 15%, it went down to 3%. Is that the very bare minimum that we can do? Because this honestly is something that, this is a form of public safety, and we've already had to cut so much with public safety, and this trains our firefighters within the whole county. I mean, I didn't know if we could, one and a half, two?
I mean, you're looking, you're looking at it tonight, you know, that's the determination this board has to make. But if you're, and that's the reason we adopted the policy, because at some point, if the county's taking on work, and we're not adding staff, or we're not building capacity, then you're just encumbering the resources that you have. This is as low as we can go. To be honest, I wasn't comfortable with 3%. So I was one of the last that thought that we could land there. But quite honestly, to all your points, this is something that we're going to do, and if the costs are more than that, we're not going to come back and ask for more money.
Okay.
But realistically, this is the lowest that I think we should entertain this. And this is a unique scenario. We might have other direct appropriations come from the state, and that would be the mindset you should have. Am I willing to take general fund funds from somewhere else in the county to supplement the fact that we're given a reduced admin fee here? And that's a question I can't answer for you guys.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Whitaker.
Thank you. I just want to say, I think it's really appropriate that we have this policy and that it's a step towards some more sustainability for our budget, and it costs money to do everything that we do, and we can't, we can't forego funding and then wonder how we're going to balance our budget. So I think it's timely that we have this policy and that we stick to it. Of course, there's going to be exceptions, but I'm very comfortable with how we're moving at this point, and I think we should all support this, this source of sustainability funding for the county.
Commissioner Toomey.
No, I just wanted to chime in and say that I think that, like to Commissioner Whitaker's point, the policy's working exactly as we intended, right? This is a really weird situation, and so, you know, we're trying to be good partners to our public safety folks in the county. So I think that this 3% of this is the lowest that we can go while being responsible. I definitely think it's the right move because, you know, this is going to benefit everybody in our county, and, you know, it was, it was an unfortunate mistake by the state that we just can't control. So, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Art.
Yes.
Commissioner Peak.
Yes.
Commissioner Haskell.
Yes.
Commissioner Pearl Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Yes.
Commissioner Mudry.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Drosha.
Yes.
Commissioner Toomey.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson.
Yes.
Commissioner Christensen.
No.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Barber.
Commissioner, Chairman Mott.
Yes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number five, resolution to approve fiscal year '24, '25 budget amendments, and I would move this resolution.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Drosha, supported by Commissioner Hanson. Any questions, comments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number six, paying our bills for the claims and purchases. I would move this also.
Moved by Commissioner Drosha, supported by Commissioner Pearl Wright. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. And the last thing on my list is labor relations negotiations, and I will defer this to Ben and Connie, the Controller's Office, and thank them for all their work in this regard. This was not an easy year for contract negotiations, so take it away, please.
Absolutely. So as many people know, and public members may not know, the county has seven labor agreements, and so we have a dutiful obligation to bargain in good faith every three or so years. We are on a three-year contract that had a wage reopener for the last two years of wages. That was because we didn't know where we were financially. So had we bargained on the front end, we would be looking at ones or zeros, and we were pretty transparent with the unions about that. And we put forward two ballot measures, and unfortunately, the public's message was figure it out with the money you have, and you all have done the work to get where we're at today. The raises that are listed in here include part of our budget, so the work that you've done with making reductions and moving have got the ability to give these pay increases. It's important to acknowledge, coming into COVID, we had three-year contracts with all of these groups, which meant that they had the same raises that was the history of Eaton County. We got by on the backs of our employees financially. So we consistently have not beat or even combated inflation, and that had wreaked havoc in recruitment and retention efforts. So I say that because we're going to look at this, and it's five in the first year, three in the second year, and some people are going to say that's, that's a lot of money. And the problem is, is we were not paying our employees for a long time. The only way we got through COVID was use of one-time ARPA funds, that we were able to give some one-time retention bonuses, which most communities did to navigate that time. But again, that supplemented an already very low wage when it came to recruitment and retention. We have tentative agreements with the Central Non-Sup and Supervisory Group, Maintenance, the Youth Facility, Animal Control, and the Sheriff's Non-Sup Division, which covers corrections and the clerks at the sheriff's office. These TAs represent an equal agreement across groups, and the only non-union group that we don't currently have a TA ready to present would be with the command officers. So we're still having good discussions with them and hope to present that at a later meeting. Open for questions if you've got them.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All right. This doesn't require a roll call, does it?
No, no.
No. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Drosha. Next up, we have the administrators' report.
Yes, thank you. I'll just talk briefly about the upcoming budget hearing that you have September 9. Am I right there? I'm wanting to forget that day, maybe. So we put, Ways and Means has approved moving the budget to the public hearing, and the public hearing is for the public to be able to come in and tell you what they like or don't like, any changes they want you to make. It is not for you to then make a decision or to make any changes. So it's for you to actually listen to what the people want, and that may be department heads, it may be the public. And then the next meeting will be Ways and Means that Friday. That meeting, any changes that the Ways and Means Committee wants to make can be addressed. And then the final meeting would be the Board of Commissioners meeting to adopt the budget on September 17. And as I've said multiple times throughout this budget process, let's remember that a budget is never final. You're still moving along throughout the year, and we have to make amendments. You saw that we made amendments just earlier in the meeting, so that occurs all the time. So let's just remember that whatever budget you adopt is to adopt a balanced budget, which we have right now. And then, you know, you proceed throughout the budget year. So I just want to make that clear because I've had a lot of questions about, can we do this, can we do that? And if we don't know what our ending fund balance is, we don't know what we could use on a one-time project or anything like that. So I just want you to all be clear, and the public to be clear on how that works. The other thing on the public hearing, what you approved tonight on the labor relations, we will not be including that because Ways and Means moved the 4.5% to the public hearing. So that's what the public will be seeing. That will be part of the packet that Melissa is putting together online, and will probably make just a small note within the packet and for Commissioner Drosha to make during his presentation, to explain that to the public, that these numbers for sure will change. But for us to go through and make all those changes, you would have to approve them, and it's an awful lot of work between now and the 9th of September, so we're not going to do that. And then the last, well, I will say a big thank you to all of you and to the unions for working with us and understanding what's happened throughout the county and knowing that we were going to try to work with them to get them pay increases. While they've been frustrated, they were very understanding, and we had great communication with them, and I think that says a lot for the change in the way that we're bargaining in Eaton County, and we'll continue to do a better job. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about is the Drain Commissioner. There's been an awful lot of discussion regarding the board's responsibility for the Drain Commissioner. So you have a limited responsibility, like you have for every elected office. You have to provide a budget. You have to provide a place for them to reside, for the public to have access. You cannot control what the Drain Commissioner doesn't do or, or does, right? So you have limited control over what you're going to do, and you have no control over assessments and petitions, and you, you just don't have that control. So while I appreciate all of our frustration, and I will tell you, I've talked to the Drain Commissioner, I've talked to legislators, we've, we've had meetings to try to get the drain code changed. You're dealing with a code that doesn't fit today's population or the landscape of Eaton County, or the whole state of Michigan, and there are multiple funding issues. I mean, Ben has a lot of different suggestions related to how they could set up, like they do a DNR trust grant. They should do something like that for water resources, for drains specifically. Things are handled differently. When you're talking drain code and making a change, let's remember, and I'm very frank with everybody, you're looking at- with everybody, you're looking at lobbyists who don't want to see that changed. So we can do all we want, and we can complain all we want, and we can make suggestions, which we are doing. So Chairman Mott, Ben Dawson, and I went and we met, and we have written several different policies and ways in which they could change the drain code. We can't control it, and it isn't your responsibility to, to do that. Now, having said that, when we talk about what you're responsible for, you can hold the Drain Commissioner or any other elected official responsible for reporting to you on a regular basis. You cannot make the elected official come in here just because, unless you create a policy, and we can talk about that short, briefly, but you're, again, you're very limited. It's frustrating. Drain Commissioner and I talked. He knows the frustration. I spent, after the July 25th meeting, I spent an hour on the phone with him driving home. And he's frustrated, too. He doesn't argue that the drain code is not a problem. And I asked him, and he's not here right now to answer this, but I asked him if he thought the drain code needed to be amended. And he can support changes to the drain code so that he's not required to follow the current petition process. So I'll hold him to that because I had that conversation with him, and I think that's what my job is, is to try to bridge that gap, and I, with any elected office, the courts, any of your department heads, that's what my job is. But I cannot control him. You cannot control him. We can create a policy, and this is what I consider to be a controversial policy, and that would be, do we, as the county, you as the board, extend full faith and credit on a drain project? So you heard when we had Bank Inter County come in, and that's where, you know, everything hit, right? The huge expenses that impacted this whole county and what we saw as drain. People really didn't know about drains until that happened, right? So we could do something with full faith and credit. We did have legal counsel from the Drainage District come in and explain to you what not extending full faith and credit does. Essentially, a drainage district has no money. That's why they asked for the county to back that. There is a very, very limited liability for the county to have to pay assessments. If it happened, the county can actually issue special assessments to get that money back. There's a process for that, and we learned about that, and you can go back and watch that. We can get more information. We've talked to legal counsel about this. We're doing our work as administration to make sure we address any of your frustrations, the public's frustrations, but we can only do what we've done so far. So if we create a policy that says Drain Commissioner has to do X, Y, and Z, and we will not extend our full faith and credit unless that is met, we can address that. You can change potentially, and this is one of the things that Ben had come up with, to say that you have to have more petitioners than what is currently required under the drain code. Now, you can't amend the drain code, but you could do that to extend full faith and credit. But again, if we wouldn't have done full faith and credit for a project that's huge, the cost of that project go up. Because if you can get somebody to buy the debt, if you can do that, then it's going to be at a higher cost because there's nothing backing that. So again, we can make changes, we can do whatever, but I just want all of you to know and the public to know that we're doing what we can do as administration and the board. You are doing your job. You've done your job. You presented, you were presented a budget, you made budget set for every elected official. I will tell you right now that you cut the Drain Commissioner two positions, solidified two positions in that office. Ben is going to be, I'm probably getting more detailed, but I will, Ben is going to be scheduling a meeting with the Drain Office to go over what that impact does. We do have an issue with the staff being, not being compensated correctly, the one staff member, because they're now doing different work. Now, is that the responsibility of the Drain Commissioner and the way everything went throughout this process? Yes. And he knows we could have handled things differently. So we'll work on that, we're doing that, but just know that we're doing what we can do, and we're doing what we're legally obligated and legally allowed to do. Did I cover everything, Ben?
It's really good.
All right. Thank you, and now I will.
As good as.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's frustrating. My job, our job in administration is to take care of the county as a whole. So I have more responsibility over trying to prepare a budget and make sure a budget's balanced and make sure departments are following their budget. And I do, I, I've said this throughout the past three years, I am concerned about the county, the operation, the budget, our employees, the staffing issues that we have, paying our employees. So that is my role, that's my responsibility. It is not to tell an elected official how to run their office. I can't tell you how to do your jobs, and I'm not going to. Try having me go and tell the courts and look at the courts that they have to do something. We can't do that, to tell the sheriff that he has to do something. You did that by cutting the budget. You did that by cutting the Drain Commissioner's budget. So again, I'm doing what my job is, you're doing your job, and if we can do better with legislation to change the drain code, then we're going to work toward that.
Well, I, I just want to say, there was a lot of time spent on that, and they didn't have to do it. You didn't have to spend the policy, or the, the proposal you, you know, drew up for the drain and the, and the meetings we had with legislators, but we did because it's important, it's important to our community. So we did, we probably, I don't know what any other county did, but I'm pretty hard pressed to think that any other county did and put in the work that you guys did to try to do something to change the drain code or at least get the ball rolling.
We did talk to other counties that are in the association that we're in, so we have done that as well. But again, you have to remember, it's, there's lobbying, there's just lobbying, there's money in these projects.
And we're just limited to our ability to be able to do anything about it.
Yes.
We're, we're an administrative arm of the state, period. We do what they tell us to do.
And it has been an exhausting three years for this office. Huge.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next up, that brings us to elected official, elected officials' comment. If any elected officials would like to address the board?
I'll just briefly say, I wanted to thank the board again for approving the consolidation of my two offices, Register of Deeds Office and County Clerk. It's looking to be a very beneficial move, cost-saving, and with cross-training, it's a level of security we haven't had before, so I want to thank you again.
Good. Glad it's working out. I think you're the only elected official here, so we are going to move on. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Moudry?
This is actually to Controller Solby. On the public hearing for the budget, what's the format? Are we listeners, or is there going to be a back and forth?
You're listeners.
Listeners, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So just like public comment?
Yeah, it's like public comment, but, you know, there's, there's, obviously, they're going to have greater concerns. You can set, Chairman can set, you know, a different time limit if he wants, and I think we've done that. I'm just going to say, I would expect and I would appreciate if there is comment, public comment, department, elected official comment about the budget and what, you know, you've all done so far, so that the public, you know, can engage. In the past, we're talking, the largest part of the presentation was the chair of Ways and Means, you know, going through what, you know, is in the budget, a report, and that was it, maybe, you know, some kind of a staff if you asked for something, and that was it. I mean, we got through some of them in less than 15 minutes, so hopefully you hear from people, and then the goal, obviously, is for you to actually listen to what they're saying, and then you can deliberate at a later time. Gives you time to digest it.
I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that there's not going to be a, a back and forth question and answer, period. It's going to be public comment.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Good question. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Pearl Wright?
Okay, under, um, under Commissioner comment, Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Moudry and I all serve on the, on board at Tri-County Office on Aging. It came to our attention, attention on Monday that Project Fresh only, it's a, it's a program for seniors, 60 and over, and they're allowed $25 for the season, which doesn't end until October, to get a voucher. When we were included in our packet, all 83 counties and what farmers participate, I mean, whether you go to their farm and buy something, or you go to a farmer's market and buy from that specific farmer that has agreed to participate with Project Fresh. Now, Project Fresh was started, I don't know, somewhere around 2006, 2007, and we started out at the MSU parking lot for the 551 building. And so those farmers would come and bring whatever produce with the charge and, and use those coupons. They've gone to something, some other, so if Commissioner Hanson or Moudry pick something up during this meeting that I'm forgetting about how to get these people registered, but we only have one farmer in all of Eaton County on our list that we got for all 83 counties that is doing Project Fresh for our seniors. Okay? And so I just left things on your desk, and that's why you have them, because there's applications, if you know seniors, to be able to apply, which they may need help. Because like Commissioner Whitaker pointed out, they have a QR code. Some people over 60 aren't using QR codes, so, but anyway. And also, it involves the farmers that can sign up to be one of these people who take these coupons for the $25, whether it's strawberries, blueberries, corn, squash, green beans, whatever, it's fruits and vegetables. So if all of you commissioners would look this over, because I don't really live in a farming district, so I'm not the best one here to be trying to go out to my neighbors. Best thing we have a problem is, is who's not putting, weeding, feeding, mowing? But, um, so I'm not going to know where the squash is. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know, under Commissioner comment, that if we can increase the people who want to participate, whether that's the seniors, 60 and over, or whether that's the farmers who are now getting their fall crops coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one upcoming community event. So in Diamonddale, the new elementary school has just finished, so there will be an open house for that tomorrow, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's a self-guided tour. I already took a tour of the building. It is a fantastic, state-of-the-art, new elementary school for the kids there. Really great security, natural lights, a plus. I went to the original elementary school. There was not, not many windows in there, so we'll definitely miss that. That school, it was built when Eisenhower was president, but just wanted to say a thank you again to the, to the voters who approved that. It's going to mean a lot to the educators and the, and the kids that go there, so they're all very excited.
Good. Looks like it's really nice. It's got a lot of, you know, TV coverage, so, yeah, it's nice, good exposure.
Yeah, it, it was seriously very impressive. I've, I've never seen a school that new, so I would definitely recommend checking it out, so.
Commissioner Drosha?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you, as everyone knows, our meetings are available on YouTube, but there's a channel that I watch on YouTube, it's called Leto's Law. It's Steve Leto, he's an attorney out of Detroit. And this week, he posted a video about municipalities and taxation, and I thought it offered very good insight into some of the aspects that we went through in Eaton County. In particular, it was about a city, I believe it was in Utah, that wanted to increase their taxes by 225%. And he went through some of the reasons why cities do that. We weren't going to increase ours by 225%, but we want, we're looking for an increase. But it just offers good insight, and I would encourage everybody to go take a look at that video. I'm going to post a link to it on my Facebook page, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had spoke at the Ways and Means meeting on Friday about the event, September 27th, for animal control. So the event's name is Woofstock, W-O-O-F. And there is a Facebook group page now, Friends of Eaton County Animal Control. You can go to that page to find out all the information. The event will go from 10:00 to 4:00. It's at 100 West Lawrence, which is the old 1885 courthouse right downtown Charlotte. I did confirm with the Parks Department today, they will have their family-friendly trailer there with family games and events. We're currently working on a dunk tank. There will be vendors, crafts, food. There will be a vaccination clinic where New Hope Pet Rescue will be coming in and offering vaccines, microchipping, and heartworm testing. There is a fee for that portion, but it's a percentage compared to what a normal vet would charge, so it's very economical for the community. We have a couple grooming studios that are going to be there doing nails, there's going to be a dog costume contest, and all the money that we raise will go to help animal control. So I'll have more info eventually. And just because this is recorded and people can go back and watch it, if people do not have Facebook and they want to find out more information, they can always send a text or call 517-588-9920. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right. Next up, unfinished business.
None.
None? Old business?
None.
New business?
None.
All right. That brings us to our second limited public comment. If you'd like to address the board, please approach podium. Limit your comments to three minutes, please.
I'm glad you brought up what you did about the Drain Commission today, and I wrote a letter earlier today that I'd like to read. My name is Jim Billig. I'm here once again to speak for many families across Eaton County dealing with excessive drain assessments. The method used to initiate drain construction is antiquated and unfair. In my case, the total owed for two drains is $40,000. I'll say that again for you, $40,000. I did not get a chance to vote on this issue. Neither of these drains, neither of these two drains are on my property, nor does my property benefit in any way from these drains. The taxpayers feel that this is a major problem in our community for several years, and the Commissioners need to give this issue more attention. When many of us called for the Drain Commissioner, he did not answer the phone, and after several visits to his office, he was unavailable. The taxpayers are anxious to hear the result of the Drain Office audit and see what steps will be taken next. While bringing attention to this issue, I've had the privilege of meeting several state representatives personally and talked by phone with Gretchen Whitner's, Whitmer's staff members just last week. All of them agree it is time for changes in the drain code and stated that bills have been introduced to seek change. I would encourage all those with drain issues to reach out to the Commissioners, state representatives, and the Governor's Office, and thank you for your time. And I do want to say that I understood from the get-go, many months ago, when we first, when I first started coming here, that the Commissioners could not do anything legally. I understand that. What I had trouble understanding is, when you knew there was a $50 million drain, or whatever million-dollar drain system, being planned. whatever million-dollar drain system, being planned, it wasn't even, it wasn't even started yet, but in the planning stages, nobody raised flags and said, who's going to pay for it? You can't just say, John Doe down the road there, well, you know, he's going to, he's good for 60 grand. No, he's trying to buy groceries or medicine for his family at the end of the month. He doesn't have any money left at the end of the month between taxes and regular expenses, and he's trying to save for something for his kids, maybe, or in my case, grandkids. I don't have 40 grand sitting there. I just don't understand. I felt that this group, these people as a group, right here, could have signed something and talked to the governor or talked to some higher-level people, and it would mean a lot more than Jim Billig or John Doe down the road here just putting up a fuss. I think it would have raised a lot more flags. And you people are supposed to watch out for the taxpayers. 40 grand and 50 grand and up the road, for me, the farmer owes $200,000. I'm not sure if he's going to keep his farm that's been in his family for three or four generations. I'm not sure he can keep it.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing none. We are adjourned till next Tuesday, September 9th. Did I say next Tuesday? Yeah, I did. Don't come back next Tuesday.